It's a pleasure having all of you join us at Lawrence Tech University. And we are very pleased to host this meeting. I'd like to start the discussion maybe for the next five or 10 minutes by talking about Lawrence Tech's vision for the next few years and the multiple opportunities for collaboration with the city that we aspire to and very confident that we can accomplish together. So again, from a vision point of view, Lawrence Tech, as you all know, is celebrating its 90th anniversary in a couple of weeks. As a matter of fact, in a couple of weeks, we have three big events happening on campus during the week of the 19th of September, all the way to the 24th. And these are the 90th anniversary of Lawrence Tech and the homecoming, of course, and also the presidential inauguration. And of course, we look forward to having all of you join with us in these events. But I think it's kind of good to reflect and say that when the Lawrence brothers have established this university 90 years ago, they had a very unique vision of education at that time. And that vision was experiential education. They wanted to make absolutely sure that every graduate from this institution would be ready to work and join the workforce from day one. This institution was not built to dispense and/or teach theory. It was specifically built to teach theory and practice and guaranteed that its graduates are capable of working and contributing to the future economy at that time, 90 years ago. It is befitting to say that 90 years down the line, this institution, this great higher education institution in the U.S. has not veered from these principles one bit. Lawrence Tech continues to be the eminent institution in the country that creates innovative, creative, technologically focused professionals across all fields of endeavor and assures that they assume great positions within the workforce and not only earn living wages, but contribute to the betterment of the societies and communities that they come from. A few interesting facts about Lawrence Tech and what we envision to do in the future. The great state of Michigan is home to approximately 43 universities or 43 institutions of higher education. I think the numbers are 23 private universities, 18 public institutions, four-year institutions. Amongst these 40-plus institutions in the last two and a half years, which were amongst the toughest two and a half years in the higher education industry in the U.S. because of the pandemic, Lawrence Tech actually enjoyed the highest salary upon graduation of any one of these universities across the state of Michigan, approaching $66,000 for the average graduating professional with a bachelor's degree. This is in a time and age where across the country, 80% of bachelor's degree graduates do not even earn living wage within the state that they graduate from. This is something that we are actually incredibly proud of as an institution of higher education. Thank you. Not only did LTU rank as the number one institution in the state of Michigan in terms of graduating salaries, we have actually enjoyed approximately, if not truly, 100% employment. People like myself and my great colleagues, the vice presidents and deans typically get asked, what is the percentage of graduates who actually get a job within six months of graduation? A typical metric of success of a university in the U.S. is that number would be upward of 80%. My problem in Lawrence Tech, or our problem in Lawrence Tech, is not actually to get jobs for our students, is to actually keep them till they graduate because they get these jobs when they are juniors and in some cases sophomores because of the internships and co-ops. And that's something we are also truly very, very, very proud of. And again, I think the sense of pride, which if you talk to any member within this institution, faculty and staff, you will really feel. Lawrence Tech really is again about experiential education. It's about preparing students with technological skills and making sure that they are technologically savvy, regardless of the discipline that they study, so that they are very, very employable upon graduation at a high level in a futuristic industry. And I'd like to announce that we have recently started so many new different degree programs in the last couple of years, and also we are anticipating new programming coming up in the next two to three years. We have started degree programs in areas like data sciences, business analytics, and artificial intelligence in the last two years. We have started interdisciplinary programming between health sciences and engineering in the area of cardiovascular perfusion. We have just welcomed our first entering class for our physician assistant program a couple of weeks ago, which we're very proud of. And we are looking at the possibility of starting new programming in the upcoming months and probably year within the areas of occupational therapy, potentially physical therapy, and other health sciences-related fields going forward into the future. We are intending to continue making sure that our students get a good breadth of education and not only depth. When you take a look at the auto industry, that industry 15 or 20 years ago used to employ only mechanical engineers and/or manufacturing professionals. Look forward 20 years down the line, and you're seeing that industry employing computer science people, you know, people within the area of electrical and computer engineering, battery experts, artificial intelligence experts, sensory, sensing experts, and so on, so forth. And the same is true of most fields going forward. There was no job called autonomous car engineer 15 years ago. There was no job called social media marketer 10 years ago. There was no job called nanotechnologist or digital and integrated media specialist or visual reality designer. And God knows, you know, 10 years from now, what kind of jobs and titles will exist. And this is truly why we intentionally assure that our students are getting the education that prepares them for multidisciplinary fields so they are able to evolve and able to study and able to self-learn after they graduate. Because most likely, whatever we teach them is going to be obsolete in 15 years anyway because that's the way higher education is. That's the reality and the truth. Lawrence Tech is very unique. We are... The U.S. is a very interesting landscape, and I want to say this with numbers because this is a point of pride for the wonderful city of Southfield. The U.S. is home to 6,000 institutions of higher education. Actually, this country, our country, is the country with the highest density of universities per population, per person in the world. Too many, if you were to ask me. Out of these 6,000 institutions of higher learning, there are only 56 institutions that are technologically focused, meaning they are comprehensive, but they assure that the students come technologically savvy from each of the programs. And out of these 56 institutions, half of them, 28, are comprehensive, meaning they offer all the disciplines, not only technology disciplines, but technologically instant focused in all the disciplines. That's less than a half percent, right? 28 out of 6,000 institutions. And out of these 28, there are only 13, 1/3, that are private universities, less than a quarter percent. Some of the names within our company of 13, and LTU is one of these 13, include names that some of you might be familiar with. The MIT, Caltech, RPI, Stevens, Institute of Technology, WPI, Lawrence Tech, Indiana Tech, and so on. We are very proud to be part of this incredibly elite circle of universities that are technological, that are comprehensive, and also private in the country. And the fact that our great partner, the city of Southfield, is home to us is something that we are very proud of and we are sure. And we know that the city is also very proud of. And we would like the rest of the universe to know that. We want to make absolutely sure that this never continues ever to be the best kept secret, which is a statement that I've heard a couple of times since I arrived, which I'm not hearing anymore, I hope, you know, in the future. But our future is together. We will make sure that the rest of the world knows this. Not only are we one of these 13, but these outcomes that I described, employment outcomes, high salaries upon graduation outcomes, the amazing intimacy between our academic degree programs and more than 800 companies in the region that do research and development with us, that employ our students, that take someone co-op and internship, is a unique characteristic even within these 13, you know, universities. Our classes continue to be small. Our classes continue to be 25 students or less. And many of the other 12 amazing institutions that are part of this group, the lecturers for freshmen and sophomore are in the hundreds of students, which is very classical in these kind of institutions. And that's something we continue to be proud of. So everything is lovely, as you've heard, but more importantly, what is it that we need to do going forward? We need to basically broaden our impact. We are a great institution. We are approximately 3,200 students. Another factoid is that this was the only institution that actually have seen enrollment increases in the whole state the last two years. Every institution, including community colleges, let alone private universities or state universities, have seen declines, as I'm sure all of you know, in the last two years. This was the only one in the state of Michigan that has seen increases because the value proposition is evident. People know when they come and study here and/or their children, they'll do well. What we need to do is to offer the opportunity of this unique and amazing education for our undergraduates, to more undergraduates, to more high school students, to get into more high schools, to get into more urban school districts, to get into more socio-economically disadvantaged populations and be able to support them to come to this amazing institution. I do not want to graduate only 1,000 undergraduates every year. I'd like to graduate 2,000 or 3,000. They stay local. Fred knows our economic impact on this region was close to $400 million last year in the midst of the pandemic, more than four times, close to four times our annual budget. That's quite a feat because the average is two, right? So we want to have more impact. We're working with our partners and colleagues, and that includes the city, to attract funding to provide for scholarships, more and more, which we're providing already, but we want to ramp it up in the next few years so we can get more students into the pipe who would benefit from this kind of education that can really transform the region and the city. The second piece, of course, that we are intending to grow, and I know my colleagues will talk about this later, is our professional development, workforce development, and upscaling operation. Usually, universities, the university's business is 95% credentialing in terms of degrees, associates, bachelors, masters, doctoral, and so on, and maybe less than 5% professional developments, certifications, micro credentials, workshops, et cetera. The intention of us at LTU is to increase that professional development offerings over the next five to seven years to be approximately 50% of what we offer. Educational models are changing big time in the country. Employers are not necessarily obsessing about the degree name or the degree level anymore. They want skilled employees who have specific skills that can help them move the industry and their business forward. This is true of adult education and also not so adult, you know, for teenagers. And we intend to expand our professional development offerings in the form of credentialings, credentials like certifications, micro credentials, workshops, limited duration certificates, et cetera, big time in the next few years to try to address that segment of the market also. And these are the two big initiatives, you know, that I wanted to talk about. We are having great support from our alumni and donors and foundation support and others. And you being part of us in these endeavors to try to attract funding to help us develop these programs will be helpful to only to all of us, and we're counting on it. Finally, I would like, of course... Well, I'm a professor. I can probably talk ad infinitum here, but we don't want to do that because this is an official meeting. I'd like to defer to some of my colleagues to touch upon specific points regarding the discussion that I've had, and thank you so much for the opportunity. Thank you.
Councilman Cruz?
Yes. First, I just want to thank Lawrence Tech for having us here this evening. It's been a very insightful presentation, and I just have a few questions, more than my more, about the, it's probably going to lean more towards student life area and so forth. So just so you know, but first thing I want to say, it was already mentioned, that the enrollment during COVID and thereafter has not faltered and actually grew. I'm curious as to what your recruitment work is like, you know? I mean, how do you go about gaining students to the college?
Thank you, Lloyd, for the question. Thank you. So the numbers are kind of interesting, and the numbers across the nation say that we've seen a decline of approximately 18% of undergraduate students in the last 12 years, various reasons, disbelief in the value proposition of higher education. You're probably reading the same things that I'm reading and we are witnessing in higher education. The deal with Lawrence Tech is the outcomes, right? We are able to prove to the parents, we are able to prove to the community that when their kids come here, number one, and the most prohibitive factor, is the sticker price. Sticker price for private higher education is very prohibitive. It looks incredibly high, $30,000, $30,000. The reality is not that. Lawrence Tech is number one, very generous with merit scholarships. We want good students, and we actually know that good students will take a good merit scholarship to come here. We cannot give the firm away, otherwise we close the business. We do give scholarships between $5,000 to $20,000, depending on the level of, you know, of the incoming students, and they all are really good students. The second, of course, part of the value proposition that we tell our parents and our students is the fact that this being who we are, the technological university, there are lots of workshops and labs and studios that needs to be manned. And our first priority for employment on campus in these multitude of research centers and laboratories and such are actually our work-study students. So we have ample opportunities for our undergraduate students to get paid up to 20 hours a week throughout, you know, the semesters, working in our labs, approximately $10 to $15 an hour. The third, which is the most lucrative, is again the intimacy between us and these companies. And most of our students go through one co-op and/or internship. Most of them, two actually, during their four years here. These are very lucrative paid internships for our architects and engineering students and science students and design students and such. And they get compensated in each one of these summers, anywhere between $10,000 to $18,000 per summer to work in one of these co-ops and internships. When you put all of these numbers together, right? I mean, the initial merit scholarship, the work on campus opportunities, including undergraduate research opportunities in which students do get paid by the grants that the faculty get or by the grants that the accelerator receives, right? Because they work on some of these projects, plus the internship, the actual sticker price becomes very irrelevant, and the tuition numbers become very manageable. And it could be, in many cases, somewhere around the $10,000 mark, which not only competes, but in many cases actually is ahead and better than public school tuition with the added value of the employment, the guaranteed high wages, et cetera. So in answer to your question, it's really explaining the value proposition to the parents and the students, seeing that value proposition demonstrated in every graduating class and seeing examples of kids who are a couple of years older and have the $80,000 job and the $90,000 job and so on, so forth. Our recruitment strategies are not very atypical. We have an amazing and expanding dual enrollment program that I'm sure some of you are familiar with. We are into 48 school districts, very large population of students from this region. Our intention is to actually expand this even further. When I came on board as VP, we had approximately 200 to 300 students enrolled in the dual enrollment program, taking one or two or three classes when they were juniors and seniors in high school to test the waters, to get familiar with higher education in general, come to the campus, get confidence that they can super higher education. It's an amazing program because 85% plus of the students who have taken dual enrollment classes in high school end up going to a university, which is an incredible percentage compared to the other sample. Now we have 1,000 students. We have grown this triple, three times, in the last two years. And about 50% of these students, Lloyd, actually come to Lawrence Tech. So there is vested interest. But the cooler thing is that 35 other percent go to higher education in general. So we're doing something good regardless, which is amazing because that percentage within these school districts that are not taking dual enrollment classes at LTU is not 85% going to higher education. It's more like 35%. So that's really the main driver of doing that. We collaborate with teachers. We cannot expand our reach. I don't think Mark mentioned this in his presentation, but our goal is to get to 5,000 dual enrollment students within the next five years. We cannot do this using our own faculty members and adjuncts to teach when you expand that base because we will be left with no professors to teach our own students at LTU. So we are actually training the teachers in the high schools so they can teach our 100-level classes so we can expand our reach indirectly like that, which will benefit everybody, obviously. So these are some of the techniques that we employ. Also, we're very big internationally now. You all know, like seven, eight years ago, and we used to have a huge population of international students. For whatever reasons, political, COVID, combination of whatever happened in the universe last few years, that number got less. We have actually doubled our numbers two years ago in terms of international students coming in. We've employed new strategies. We just got close to 120 students, new international students this fall. We're expecting another 130, 140 in the spring. And this university, within three years, will get back to the level of close to 400 to 500 international students. That also helps with the enrollment in many different ways. Hope that answers the question?
Well, you already got to my first two already. The other one was about partnerships, so I'm glad to hear that, you know, you are doing work with the high school students.
Absolutely, and that will expand significantly in the months and year to come.
Okay, so don't leave. I got two more things I think for you. I just was curious as to how many online courses do you have or do you have any? And do you offer certificate programs for people that may not finish? You said something about your retention and so forth.
So the answer to the first question is very, very minimal, online courses, but we do offer some. Again, this is a technological hands-on theory and practice experiential education type university. You can't run a machine and build a robot or a car if you're learning it, you know, at home in front of, you know, of the TV for two years. So we intentionally tried to do as much as possible very safely on the ground during the pandemic. So the answer is yes, we do, but very little online. And in some cases, in few programs that are not maybe such intensely workshop-oriented or lab-oriented or studio-oriented, that could actually be a good alternative way of doing it, but the percentage of complete online courses and/or degree programs is probably within the range to 5% to 10% at this point. Your second question was about...
You offer certificate programs?
Yeah, yes. And again, as I mentioned, and as Mark has probably also mentioned, we are expanding significantly in non-degree programs, including certifications. And they vary in length. Some of them are, you know, 20 hours, you know, timewise. Some of them are 40 hours. Some of them are comprised of particular modules or courses. Some of them are based on several days of training. So the answer is yes, and we offer certifications in areas like leadership. We offer certifications in mobility and electrification and many more that I'm not... I don't have a list now, but the answer is yes. And the intention is to expand that type of non-degree offering significantly in the next few years.
Thank you. And just one last question I had, and the reason I asked about online is because I still can't understand how you teach math online. I never figured that out. And so I know that...
I've heard more exciting things being taught online, believe me, in the last one half years. It's interesting, it's interesting, yeah.
I was just curious, I was, I just wanted to say, I say this now. I was going to ask earlier, I think I talked, we talked about diversity and equity and inclusion. And when I was coming in, I met your director.
Of course, of course, he's amazing, yeah.
I'm just very pleased about that. I'm just curious, how big is the office in terms of staff and everything at this point?
The DEI office?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So the DEI office, as far as I know, is Karen and two other individuals. And then we have committees that do work across the campus to help out. This is not the type of place where we have departments that are more than five to three to eight people. I mean, it's, you know, our campus is very, very efficient, but Karen is excellent. She really utilizes herself very, very efficiently. And the committees that she has formed across the campus to do the heavy lifting since the last two years have done a magnificent job. I'm personally very proud of their work.
Yeah, because a lot of times, sometimes that work is dropped on one person, and they expect them to change the whole organization.
No, one doesn't make much sense, but you know, three and people helping out makes sense, and that's exactly what it is.
Thank you, Mr. President.
My pleasure, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Brightwell?
Yes, I want, I think I have a question that sort of follows in line with what Mr. Cruz was talking about. It deals with students. What is the student body and what is the capacity for now for students? At this point in time, what would be your full capacity?
Your question was capacity, correct?
Yes.
Capacity is defined mainly in higher education institutions by the number of full-time faculty and adjunct faculty. And you can juggle these numbers, and a good number is 50/50, right? Meaning a solid, especially in a university like ours, focusing on theory and practice, professionals coming in, teaching one class a year or semester, and full-time amazing scholars and researchers who are faculty members. So that's one anchor parameter. So I'm going to answer the question like that. If we want to maintain our very good balance of 50/50 faculty and full-time faculty and adjuncts, eminent adjuncts, without increasing that number of faculty members and keeping it the way it is, which is, let's say, 170 full-time faculty and 500, for example, adjuncts, we could grow at the undergraduate level about maybe 20%, 25%, maybe 30%. And at the graduate level, about 30% too. So 25 and 30, 25% more undergraduate and 30% graduate, meaning the total number of students that we have right now, which is 3,000, could be close to 4,000, 3,800, with the right distribution, of course, within the majors, obviously, assuming uniform distribution, well, normal distributions happen. However, it doesn't work like this because usually when you see, like what we're saying, growing enrollments in particular areas, you tend to hire more faculty in these areas because the classes might be more than 25. So that automatically increases the capacity more when you hire more faculty. It's a cash 22. But anyway, the simple answer is, without too much investment, we can probably grow maybe 700 or so, 700 to 800 more students, if the distribution of the students in the measure that we have remains the same. Does that answer?
Yeah, yes, it did. And the reason for the question is that, I guess I've been in some, in some conversation that companies that are instituted in Southfield, they did indicate that they would obviously be interested in drawing only students here at Lawrence Tech, the talent that's here at Lawrence Tech. So I was just trying to get a favor for the growth here.
As I mentioned, the problem is not to get kids jobs. If I'm graduating 10,000 kids who are technology savvy in the areas we teach, they'll get jobs. This country is facing a shortage of 300,000 STEM workers every year. We have no one. We're not graduating a quarter of what the needs in technology are in the U.S., let alone Michigan. This is not the problem. The problem is getting more people from high school into the pipe, getting more high school students interested in technology in the various disciplines and getting them through the programs. Jobs is not an issue. You see, the interesting thing is you see all of these people looking for a job, right? I mean, job seekers that do not have great paying wage-high jobs. And you see great number of openings, the 300 that we can fill every year, 300,000 in STEM and technology. And you say, what's going on? I mean, how come people are looking for jobs and all of these jobs are open? I mean, how come people are looking for jobs and all of these jobs are open? It's no match. People are not qualified for these jobs. So, we need to get them through the pipe, either through professional development, as was mentioned a few minutes ago, Lloyd, or through, you know, getting them from high school to be interested in STEM to fill that void, so.
Okay. The last question is, this is more of a, other than the state of Michigan, what is your major feeder state that we get most?
Neighborhood states, neighboring states, mostly, mostly in the Midwest. But we, at any given point in time, we have students from more than 14 to 143 states. We have students as far as California, Texas, East Coast, New England. But of course, the bulk is, the density of the students reduces as a geographical area increases. And again, that's very typical, so.
Okay. Okay, yes, sir. And one final question, I should perhaps know this.
Should I sit or should I?
No, you can go. This is for, this is for Kevin Hudson. I might have missed this. Where is this diamond field? Where, where is this baseball diamond? Physically, where is it located?
It's right graduation ring on the Southfield apartment.
Okay, okay, that's what I thought. Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Councilman Hoskins?
Thank you. Yeah, come on, come on back up there, Dr. Sob. As always, and thank you all for so much for your presentations. It's always nice to be here. I was telling Dr. Sob and the rest of the group earlier, I used to teach here, and so it's always nice being back on campus.
It's a pleasure having you.
So, Councilman Brightwell kind of touched on what I was thinking about with capacity. And as you're adding more and more programs to the university, are you thinking about maybe expanding your footprint? And I'm thinking particularly with housing.
We are full. I mean, Kevin gave us this panicked call at 9:30, you know, PM, three, four, two days before the beginning of every semester, you know, you know, telling me that we're full, I mean, in terms of our residential housing. So, the answer is yes, but there are so many different creative and innovative models of doing this. The classical model is to build a new dorm, which we could probably do, either within with our immediate footprint in the back of the campus or some other location. All of these are possibilities. I am really somebody who don't like to get loans for any reason whatsoever, so I think there are partnership models by which we can partner with developers. And we do sharing, of course, based on the development and based on what else is in the development to provide housing for target students. Without details, because there are no details, but for example, one of the areas we're thinking of expanding in, in the future, is health sciences, as I mentioned, because that's an amazing area of growth. And given also the way we teach health sciences, infusing technology and things like robotic surgery and telemedicine and bioinformatics and so on in our programming and many others, we're seeing an expansion, we're contemplating an expansion of programming. It would be nice, for example, if we can do that for the health sciences students within a development that would have clinics, for example. That would make sense. So, the answer is yes, we're contemplating, you know, expansion, not by necessarily, you know, breaking the bank or getting loans and building, you know, residences, but by doing very effective, true partnerships with developers that can work for both sides, so.
All right.
Okay.
All right, thank you for that. And one more question, just the partnerships that you have with the school, with school districts. I'm just curious, if you know off the top of your head, what you're doing specifically with Southfield Public Schools?
Yes, we do. Yes. I don't have the exact number. Actually, I might have the number in one of, can I, can you? No, it's here. I know, you threw me all over the place. I don't know. Give me a second, okay? So, your question, if I'm not mistaken, is the number of dual enrollment students within this district, correct?
No, just some of the things that you're doing with Southfield Public Schools.
Sure. All right. So, the answer is yes, right? And we have several dual-enrolled, dual-enrolled classes. But again, I mean, the range of activities, let me just give you some of the, this, this might be in your packet already, I think. Is it? Oh, it's not? I'm sorry. Okay. Okay, I'll give you this at the end, right? We'll give all of you this at the end. It provides for a very nice summary. So, here, for example, we have 900 Southfield students and 200 teachers in our dual enrollment classes who went through the teacher development, professional development training, and the summer programming. We have provided campus space and athletic field. We have the South public middle and high school students are part of our Blue Devil Scholarship Initiative, which some of you are very familiar with. And anyway, the list, yeah, so the answer is, it's a multitude of activities across the board, not only dual enrollment, but scholarship initiatives and activities on campus, including the Marburger STEM Center and summer programming, yes.
All right, thank you.
And we intend to expand that too, yeah.
All right, that's exactly what I want to know. Thank you.
Yep, 100%. This is our city, and we need to do more in our city in addition to the other cities. And we believe in that, and we will make that happen.
Thank you. And you'll make sure that all of us get a copy of that for...
Yeah, 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 of course.
That would be great. Thank you. Thank you. Again, thank you for hosting, letting us host here today. We appreciate your, being our neighbor, our partner. Thank you again, everyone, for coming out and presenting. And counsel, if we have nothing else, I will now declare this meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.